Chair of the Board of Representatives?
Here.
Chair of the Board of Representatives?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed in knowledge and permissible. Item number one on today's agenda is citizens' input. We do not have any. Moving on to the second item on the agenda is the minutes from the April 23, 2024 meeting. Councilor Deion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion based on information contained in these minutes. Comments made during citizen input and a letter that was recommended to be sent to Corporation Counsel for an ordinance on the homeless encampments. So my motion would be to send an updated or additional letter requesting that an ordinance be created.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I'd like to amend it, that the letter also be sent to the mayor's office because we've sent this letter to Corporation Counsel before. So if we also CC the mayor and Corporation Counsel. Could I have a...
Sure.
Second.
Motion made and amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has it.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes. Made by Councilor Deion, second by Vice President Perera. All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? The ayes have it. Item number three is a resolution discussing strategies to decrease solid waste and recycling costs tabled January 30, 2024.
Motion to lift...
Motion to lift from the table made by Councilor Deion, second by Councilor Perera. All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? The ayes have it. Gentlemen, come on down, please. And when you get settled down, if you could identify yourselves and your positions, please.
Al Oliver, Director of City Operations.
Charlie Denme, Director of Department of Community Maintenance.
Hey, my name is Matt Thomas. I'm an attorney with an office at Four Park Place, Suite 101 in the city of New Bedford, and I'm special counsel to the city.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. So we last were here in January discussing where we were with solid waste. There's been some updates, so I'll allow whoever would like to give us an update first.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like to just give a brief update and then we can have a conversation.
You may, Councilor. Go for it.
So when we were last here, we informed you folks, or the committee at that time, that we were going to start enforcing the ordinances with regard to trash collection. And the first thing we were going to do was going to be stopping curbside collection to businesses and the non-residential portions of the nonprofits. So the code 622C provides that the city shall collect solid waste and recyclables from single-family dwellings and multiple-family residential buildings containing up to six dwelling units. That's what we're supposed to be picking up. We were picking up a lot more than that, as you all know, especially you, Councilor Deion. So on February 1, 270 letters went out to commercial, mixed-use, and non-residential nonprofits. What I mean by that is People Inc. over here got a letter, but if they had residential, if there were residentials, we would still collect from them. If it was the church, we would collect from the rectory, but we're not collecting from the center. If it's a parsonage, we'll collect from the parsonage, but not from the parish hall. So letters went out, 270 of them, informing this first group, and what we did is we split it in half, that curbside collection would cease on March 1. Amazingly, we didn't get many calls. I think we were all expecting to be inundated with calls. There weren't a lot of calls, and I think that's because the expectation was out there that we were going to stop because it had been said so many times that we were going to stop. So when they finally got it, okay, we stopped. We then sent out a second letter on March 8 informing 252 commercial properties, mixed-use properties, and non-residential nonprofits. So that comes out to about a total of about 530 parcels, ballpark, 520 parcels, that we would cease collection on April 5. Again, not a huge hue and cry from the public on it. When we did this, we realized the one challenge we were going to have was going to be the mixed uses. Because in a mixed-use property, we're still collecting the residential side, but not the commercial side. And as it's been borne out since then, that has been a challenge for us, and we're continuing to fight that challenge, and I'll get to how we're doing that in a little bit. But what initially started happening is after we said we'd stop, DCM went down through the streets pulling the barrels. And we've been able to collect most of them. There've been a couple people that really love their barrels and have been hiding them on us, but for the most part, we've collected them. The issue has been the mixed uses. There's a particular property I know where the commercial building on the property was putting their commercial waste in the residentials. So we've started enforcing that stronger. As a matter of fact, there's a code, there's a section in the code of ordinances about disposing commercial waste in an illegal fashion. That's what that is theoretically, and we'll talk about that in a sec. So we've been working on that. It's a work in progress, but we're no longer collecting from the industrial park. We're no longer collecting from the big... I was amazed at some of the properties we were collecting from. And we will be coming back to you, just to get a little bit ahead of myself here in September, with a proposed ordinance change, to update the ordinance, to get rid of reference to purple bags and other things. One of the things that we're looking to put in there is that when businesses get their business certificates every year, they have to supply something from a trash company stating that they've got private trash collection. A lot of other places require that. We don't, we're going to start, we would like to start requiring that. So that's it. We're not collecting the commercial. Our second issue was reimbursement from the schools. And we had had a situation where in fiscal '22, we got reimbursed the vast sum of $63,000, which, when we looked at it, really made no sense. That number had been set years earlier, and in most communities, it's a reimbursement situation. And for example, in the city of New Bedford, the contract that they just signed has a separate section where schools are invoiced separately, directly, not through the city. And once we get to a future contract, that's how we would do it here as well. But right now, we're still dealing with it. So whereas in fiscal '22, we were paid $63,000, the school bill for fiscal '24 was $260,000. Now, why is it so high? Because we're actually keeping, we're doing much better at getting a handle on what they're actually disposing of. And under that old bill, they were not paying for the disposal part. It was, or they weren't paying for the collection part. It was just one half. So again, that's a work in progress because schools are not picked up in a dedicated pickup, dedicated route. They're picked up as part of other routes in the city, although as Mr. Denme and Mr. Oliver will tell you, there are different pickups on containers and things like that that we can do, but it's not separated out where there's a single. So one of the things we did do is, we and other communities have done this, we sent an empty truck to go pick up just the schools for one run, then went over to the state pier, weighed it, and that's how we came up with the estimated tonnage that we're relying on. So that was our, doing a little bit better on reimbursement. We've started a process of enhanced education. So the way we're proposing to deal with this issue in the city, and every city faces this, is through enhanced education and enhanced enforcement, the carrot and the stick. The enhanced education, we met with the school administration before school let out. The mayor, the superintendent, myself, and a few others met with them, and we're working to develop an enhanced recycling and sustainability curriculum in the schools. They've got one, but we're working on that. Students are the best recycling ambassadors. So when school gets back in, there'll be contests in the classes. We're looking to do a recycling calendar where the outwork is done by the school, by children from the schools that were put out, and things like that. So we're going to work with that with the schools. And part of that is that an average person creates 4.9 pounds of garbage a day, solid waste a day. That's the average. 4.9 pounds. Now, you may make less or more or less, but that's the average. About 21% of that is food waste. And I know that there was a, it's funny, this is Councilor Lee's resolution from 2020, and he was a big fan of composting. And there are programs for composting in New Bedford and Dartmouth. There's a new drop, food drop-off program that they've had a little bit of an issue with on the Dartmouth side, a little bit of, I hate to say, but maggot control, but the weather gets involved with that. So in total, Massachusetts disposes of about 6 million tons a year. The more that we can shift over to recycling, the less we can, we have to dispose of. It saves the city money in the long run, especially if it's a clean recycling, and we're going to get to that in a second. So that's the education part. On the enforcement part, I have for you... This is the breakdown for...
May?
March through June of citations that were issued by the compliance folks. And you can see that June went down, May and June, because we were dealing with COTS at that point in time, and I'll get to the COTS in a second. But overflow, placement of COTS overflow, so that's when the tops can't close, or when you've got it on the side, you'll see the number of fines, unauthorized bulky items on the sidewalk, illegal dumping on the sidewalk, sidewalk litter, trash and recycle contamination, and then obstruction. I would suspect that if we come back in October, November, with a new list, you're going to see much different than this. Because we've met with the compliance people, they're really good, they're short-staffed, but they're doing really well, and we're pushing a new type of enhanced enforcement. When we did cart maintenance, which was the other thing we complied, we completed, was we went through the entire city doing the maintenance on the carts. At the same time, there were two parts of that. One was to do maintenance on the carts. The other part of the effort was to get an idea of what carts were out there. So we've got a better idea of the cart numbers and everything, and what we're doing now is all of that information is being put into Excel spreadsheets. So we're able to see which carts are where. What is going to happen, and it may take a couple of months to implement this totally, but when they go to cite someone on a cart, they're going to scan the cart number. That cart number is assigned to somebody, to a house. That cart number's going to be scanned, there's going to be a photo taken of it, and there's going to, first time out, there's going to be an UPS tag put on it. Second time out, they're going to scan it, take the picture, and there will be a friendly reminder letter telling them that these are all of the, checking off all of the things that are not right. This is being sent, the UPS tag is being put on the cart, the letter is being sent to the property owner. Second time, third time out, they're going to be cited, and it's going to be cited to the property owners. The letter says, if we have an issue again, you're going to be cited. And they will be cited, and it's going to be whoever that cart is assigned to. Now, what tends to happen is on windy days, carts tend to end up going places they don't belong, or people trade them off, or those games that have been played. The carts are assigned to a location, that's how it's going to be fined. If that person comes in and says, this isn't mine, and we look and it's at the wrong property, we'll deal with it. We're going to have the database capabilities to do that. But that's how we're fining it, and the fine is going to the property owners. Why? Because the ordinance says the property owners. Secondly, by law, the property owners are all responsible for everything that happens on their property. So it may seem a little unfair at first, but we can't find the tenants outright. We have to go through the property owners. Because we don't have a contract with the tenants, we have the contract, so to speak, with the property owners.
Well, similar to insurance...
Exactly.
...issues.
Can I ask a quick question before you go further?
Sure.
When you say that the carts are assigned to that property, so we've had a lot of property that's been sold.
It stays with...
So it's just to the...
To the address.
That address. So then you'd have to look up who owns that property.
Which we do, yeah. We're creating a database. We're getting the records from the assessors' office, cross-referencing that with the re-hig, the re-rig data, which is the information on there. And there'll be a database that cross-references it, so that eventually you'll put in the CAD ID, and it'll pop up on the screen. And eventually, what we'd like to get to is have handhelds out there, and we'll do it first with phones and stuff, but handhelds, the same way that the traffic enforcement people do. And the idea is to, it's not to be pejorative by any means to people, but it's to help facilitate people complying.
Probably.
Right. Because as you'll see, I mean, this is a hefty cost, and so what we're trying to do is in the most cost-effective fashion possible while we're protecting the public health. Because that's what this is all about, really. It's about protecting the public health. So you'll get the UPS tag, the friendly reminder, then the enforcement letter. One thing I would note is that the Municipal Empowerment Act, which is working its way through the state legislature right now, and it's at the Senate side, and we're hearing that it's going to be passed by July 31, has in it a provision that makes it easier to take fines and put them on the tax bills. We could do that with municipal charges like water and others very simply. Fines have always been a couple of hoops you have to jump through. The idea is it's going to make it as simple to put them on the tax bills as municipal charges. I'm sorry. Mr. Thomas? Okay.
So if I could just interject, what Mr. Thomas was talking about, we are looking at updating our software, our scanning devices. We want to make sure we're brought up to a new standards at this point. It will help the inspectors, it will help us, so we have to automate as best as we can at this point.
And, you know, some people say, well, a city should act like a business. I don't think it is, should act like a business because you have a different motive. A business has a profit motive. A city has a motive of providing services and at the end of the day, at the end of the year, having $1 more than they needed, okay? But that doesn't mean that a city can't act businesslike. And so slowly but surely, the way we handle solid waste in the city is going to become much more businesslike. We're doing analysis, as you'll see in a second, which is similar to the analysis that the private sector would do on trash collection. Because that's the only way we can, the city can make decisions, inform decisions. My role in all of this is to try to facilitate all this and then hand it off to these folks. I'm not looking to be the trash dad, but my goal is to try to help facilitate the different pieces of it so that we can get to a point where all that happens. So for example, the EZ disposal contract. This year, starting July 1, it's $417,000 a month, for a total of about five, approximately $5 million a year. We have two more years left on that contract. We've looked at the number of hauls they do. So there are five days of collection, there are typically six routes a day. They differently, we've looked at the disposal from the Republic side of what they've been dropping off there to determine a total number of hauls. When you look at that versus the 417, we're paying about $700 per haul when we pick this up. So that's important, because as we're looking to do things, you know, the comparison is $700 per haul. Now, they're also not disposing fully, they're not disposing full trucks. A truck is typically about, what, 16 tons?
Anywhere between 13 to 16 tons. Depending on the size of the truck and the age of the truck.
Okay. So 13 to 16, on average, they're disposing 10.5 tons a trip. Now, that's because Republic is right here, but it also means that we're getting more hauls.
Right.
Because they're not filling the truck up before they're sending it, okay? Part of that could be a function of the route. Part of that could be a function of the day. But those are the things that we're looking at now that, quite honestly, we never had the ability to look at before. And that becomes something when you're talking about somebody, talking to EZ about doing something, and they're saying, well, you know, it's costing me more. Well, the question is, if it's costing you more, why aren't you sending full trucks? Okay? So it gives us the ability to be able to have a conversation with them. So that's on the EZ side. Republic is charging us $113.20 a ton for disposal, and that'll be till October 14. That contract is up October 14. When we spoke to them about trying to get a longer contract and a better price, we couldn't really get anywhere. So starting October 15, we're going to be going to Crepo Hill, Dartmouth, which is the Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge District. So that's where Dartmouth and New Bedford disposed of their garbage. And the contract for the remainder of fiscal '25 is $116 a ton. Market rate out is about 125, so we're getting a decent price from Crepo Hill. The issue there is it's a little bit of a longer haul, okay, than going to Republic. And so that's why the issue of how much they're putting in the trucks becomes a bigger issue. Because if they come back and say, well, I need more trucks to do this, well, you're not filling the trucks. Fill the trucks, and you might not need as many. You might need a little bit more, but you might not. Recycling is a bigger issue for us. Because unfortunately, what's happened is the difference between municipal solid waste and recycling is getting worse here in the city. The more you recycle, the less you dispose. That's the idea. Pay-as-you-throw forces you, when we had pay-as-you-throw, it forces you to recycle more and dispose of less. The fact that the barrels are a certain size used to serve a double purpose. It was, you don't want them more than 50 pounds because somebody had to lift them up and put them in the truck. Now, you're at that size, that gallon size, because you don't want more than that amount of garbage. Because it encourages you to recycle with the rest of what you have. When you're putting it over, filling it, or when you're putting it on the side of the road, you're frustrating the purpose of the size of that. So recycling is a very important thing. And if you look at just between 2018 to now, the disparities have become much worse. COVID had something to do with it. But right now, household is disposing about a ton of garbage a year here in Far River, and they're only disposing about a quarter of a ton of recycling here in Far River. The idea is to get the tonnage on the recycling up, maybe by, the goal would be 30% more recycling, if we can. If, you know, that's where we want to try to get to. Now, on the recycling side of this, that's E.L. Harvey that we're dealing with. So what's going to happen now is, right now, everything goes to Lewiston Street. We've been doing that because we were trying to pick out the contamination, which is actually what gave rise to this resolution in the first place. We're trying to do that. Unfortunately, the building that we're doing it in is not really watertight, and we've come to realize that in spite of our best efforts, we may be making some of it worse. So what is going to start happening in about two months is the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday routes on recycling are going to be direct hauled to zero waste. They've done an analysis, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is a cleaner recycling. So if it's a cleaner recycling, there's no need to mix it with Tuesday and Thursday, which is a much more challenged recycling, and it's reducing the quality of the Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So Monday, Wednesday, Friday is going to be hauled directly to zero waste in Rochester. Now, that's a longer haul. It's about a 40-minute haul as opposed to going to Lewiston Street. But when we go to Lewiston Street, it costs us $500 a haul from there. There's typically two hauls a day. So it's costing us $1,000 a day to take stuff out of Lewiston Street to get rid, to send it to New Bedford, where it's then mostly disposed of because it's so contaminated. So here, it's going to be $125 a ton to go directly for disposal, directly to zero waste. If there's more than 20% contamination in it, we'll be charged $160 a ton. The Tuesday, Thursday hauls are going to continue to go to Lewiston Street until we can address that through enhanced enforcement, enhanced education. And that's going to be disposed of at $125 a ton if it's clean, $160 if it's more than 20% contamination, but you have that haul issue there that we don't have because under the EZ contract, there's, it's a fixed-price contract, and they can't come back. Now, in all honesty, when we've talked, and we've met with EZ and talked about these changes, EZ is going to come back to us with price changes, price increases as, increases in their cost. And the mayor has informed them that while we're under no obligation to pay them more, we're willing to consider a voluntary increase in the payment if it's going to help us do this with going to Crepo Hill and doing, it's not so much Crepo Hill, it's the zero-waste deliveries, which are the bigger one. So that's pretty much where we are right now. And that's updating what we told you we were going to do last time, and for the most part, we've pretty much delivered on everything we said we were going to. Now, we didn't do it perfectly. It's a challenge, but a city is a living thing, and like any living thing, it's messy. And so it doesn't always work as neatly as we'd like it to, but between Al and Charlie and their staffs, they're doing the best they can, and I think we're doing a pretty decent job in addressing these things. We're still seeing some challenges, but that's it. So what's coming next? The next thing that's going to happen is we're going to enforce curbside collection on the units above six. So for example, we're only supposed to collect up to six units. There's 43 properties in Far River that are seven, that are seven unit or more, a seven unit. Of those 43, we're collecting from 29 of them. There's 42 unit, properties in Far River that are eight units. We're collecting from 20 of them. They're going to get letters as of August 1 telling them that as of September 3, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, that we're no longer going to collect. We're right now going through an analysis of what we call, the assessors call 112s. That's anything over eight units. Now, that could be an apartment building like Royal Crest or those. That could also be a piece of property that has two buildings on it. And if you have a six in one and a three in the other, that's nine units on that property, and they won't get collected anymore either. So we're doing that analysis.
So...
Chair of the Board of Representatives?
Sorry. Because I'm sitting here thinking, a lot of information, so I don't want to forget any of the questions. So that would, so a property that that would pertain to specifically would be, for example, Troy Street?
I don't know, I don't know by addresses...
They're all four, like, they're all four-unit buildings, but there's like eight buildings on that property?
Right. What it all depends is the assessors' map. If you have, if you own 12 units, and those 12 units are four units on one assessors' property, four on another, four on another, you're fine. If they're all on one property, you're not. Because that's the way it's written.
Yeah.
So you could have some properties that seem like complexes, but because they each have a separate tax bill for those properties, that's a separate property. And I can think of some that are like that. On the other hand, we have properties in the city where there are two, there's a bunch of them in Far River, New Bedford too, where there's two units on the same property, two buildings. Ones are six, ones are three. Under the way the ordinance is written, that six and the three are nine units on one assessors' map, one property. That wouldn't be collected. So what we will try to do is, as we go through this process, we're going to try to put out as much, this is why I don't have the numbers on the 112s yet. It's a lot more of a complex thing of going through the assessors' records, looking at the GIS map, going through everything, and just trying to be fair about this. And those will be, they'll get the letters and we'll look at it from there. One thing I forgot to mention is, on the enforcement side, we're also going to work with Far River Government TV, and we're going to do some outreach by videos. So one of the videos is going to be following the enforcement guys as they go down the street one day, to show them what it entails. They go down to look at overfills first, then as the trucks come down to pick up, they look at other things. And so they are out there. We want to make people aware that we are in the process of doing this. We wanna make people aware that we are in the process of doing this. It'd be great if we had fifteen thousand more enforcement people, but we got what we got.
Yeah, I don't believe, I believe there are separate assessors' maps for this particular property, but somehow, I feel like there's at least two units on each property.
Yeah.
If not more.
Well, we're gonna look at that.
Right?
And we can...
And I think they have common utilities too, somehow.
We're going, the way it says is on a property. So that's an assessor's property. Assessor's map. So that's what I'm, we're looking at. When we go through and do the rewrite, and you have a chance to look at the new ordinance, ordinance, that could be addressed. But for right now, the ordinance is written that way, and that's how I'm advising that it be implemented. Mattresses. The goal is to get out of the mattress business, mattress collection business. We're charging, what, fifty dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty dollars.
Um, we spoke to Hand Up today, and Hand Up is a company in New Bedford on Rodney French Boulevard, it's where a lot of people go. They'll, they will, they're willing to start doing curbside collection on a call basis for fifty dollars. So if we can do that, it's even better for us to get out of the mattress business, because once we go to Crapo Hill, Crapo Hill doesn't allow mattresses. We don't wanna be in the business. There's no, there's no sense if we, if somebody will do it privately. We've gotta look at that, so that'd roughly be around October fifteenth. We're talking to a couple of companies that do textile pickup, because that's a banned waste now as well, textiles, where you'll call them. It's like, it's like what the Big Brothers do, the Big Sisters. But there are companies that'll do it, and when they do it, they'll cut back to the city a percentage of what they sell. So it's a way to help, it's not a huge amount, but it's something, and then it helps us with our recycling credits with DEP. So, that's something that we're looking at. And we're gonna look at that as well. We're gonna look at food waste again. Food waste is always a real tough issue in cities. There's that urban myth that you do it and you're gonna get rats in your yard. That doesn't really happen, even in tight areas. But it's a matter of trying to get over that and trying to figure out what to do. And to do common collection is, is a problem that we don't really have the ability to deal with yet. Um, as I said, sometime around September, you're gonna see the proposed amendment to the ordinance. And I would encourage you to look at it and, and consider it. And if you have ideas, please let us know and share them with us. And then I mentioned the scanning of the bins. So that's gonna really start in earnest, probably about two months, where we're gonna be scanning the bins to go from there. So that's pretty much where we are. I can answer any questions here.
Counselor, yeah, shut off the floor.
Um, so, in terms of the ordinance, I believe we already took purple bag out of the ordinance.
Not still in there.
Then...
Parts of it are out, but parts of it is still in.
Okay, in terms of, 'cause I remember that, um, at one time it said, uh, had to be in a recept, in, in a receptacle, a city.
Right.
A city, how they refer to it.
Well, we still wanna have...
Receptacle with a purple bag.
We still wanna have, if possible, you still wanna have garbage put in plastic bags in the, in the, in the bin. It helps keep the bins cleaner.
Right.
It helps dispose easier. But there are sections in there that still talk about pay-as-you-throw and things like that. And we have to, we don't have pay-as-you-throw, so we have to get that out.
Yeah. But the actual wording, the verbiage, purple bag, that was removed. I remember that being removed.
When I talk purple bags, I'm talking about pay-as-you-throw.
Okay.
So, the idea is to do that. Quite honestly, the other thing too, that I can tell you right now that I'm gonna propose, is doubling the fines. A business that is in a mixed-use property, that is only being fined a hundred dollars to dispose of their commercial waste in a residential bin, that's easy. That, I'll do that any day of the week. It's cheaper than having a dumpster. And so the fine has to be at such a level, for that part of it at least, that it's not, that you, there's no, uh, there's no incentive to use the city for your cash flow.
So, okay, so that's, yeah. Yeah, I know that verbiage was changed, so, but, okay, but it makes, the other part of it makes sense. In terms of compost, have we sold all the bins that we had for composting? Did people ever jump on board with that? What happened with that?
We, we sold some, uh, but we have the majority of them still in stock. We, uh, we were hoping it would take off a lot, uh, a lot better than it had. We constantly bring them out with us, so we have them on A-frames up in the lobby. But, um, we just didn't have the participation that we anticipated. So we have probably sixty, maybe sixty compost bins, fifty, sixty compost bins, still in stock with, you know...
I think we had a hundred originally, didn't we?
We had a hundred total we purchased. So, but that was, in the, those sales were over the course of two years. Three, across the three years.
So there really hasn't picked up?
No, they haven't picked up.
That's part of the education. It may be possible that, uh, through working at the schools, we could encourage that, because the benefit to a city of pulling food waste out is that it reduces your tonnage. If you're a landfill, it's a mixed bag, because if you pull the food waste out, you're getting more capacity, but you're also getting less methane. And since a lot of them will use the methane for waste of energy, you're getting less of that. But from a city's point of view with just collection, it's worth doing something with it, and then trying to deal with it in an agricultural fashion, whether we use the people in, um, Westport.
Yeah.
Uh, where, where the yard waste is going. There's some process, programs out there that have enhanced composting with yard and leafing yard, where they actually put some food on it, some food waste on it, and mix it in, and it helps it dispose faster, or degrade faster, so that you get a decent compost out of it. But that's a, that's a challenge.
Okay, now, I, I don't remember, um, originally, I remember discussion about twenty-five dollars a bin, but did we stay at that number, or did it go up?
When we purchased them, we purchased them through a DEP grant, and we have to sell our stock right now with twenty-five dollars a bin.
It is twenty-five still, okay.
Twenty-five.
Um, let me see, so how many fines of these fines have actually been paid?
I don't know yet. That, that's a number we're trying to work through. Right now, the ability, it's, we're, we're, we're trying to walk before we can run. So eventually, we're gonna be able to give you a spreadsheet that's gonna tell you, these are the fines, these are the ones that are outstanding by property. Right now, there's a lot of pencil involved. And so I didn't have a chance to follow up on the collection side. Uh, they were doing year-end stuff with the collector's office. That was a little bit more important, to get the year-end closed. But we will be getting that information for you.
Um, I know I'm jumping all around, but as the comp does it...
I jumped all around. You gave me the luxury of going through this, and I appreciate it.
So in terms of the number of hauls, so is, that number has to be, I'm sure it's not huge, but has to be, there has to be an offset, because you're not hauling it all from industrial park anymore.
Right, but the, the issue was, industrial park wasn't a unique haul. It was part of a bigger haul. Okay, it was part of a day's worth. So, we are seeing more waste up to a certain point in the neighborhoods. And that's because people are not recycling as much as they were recycling. We're also seeing much more recycling cardboard. And that's why the cardboard process in the north end and in the fast-paced end are working now. One thing that we are looking to do is to have a conversation with Amazon.
Okay.
Because Amazon is probably the biggest producer of cardboard, Amazon and Walmart. And, um, we are going to have a conversation with them about possibly trying to get into some kind of a program where, as your Amazon packages are being delivered, you leave out your used packages, your cardboard tied up, and they take it back with them. Kinda like the old milkman used to do when you'd put out your milk bottles. There's, it's, I'm not saying that's gonna be an easy conversation.
No.
I approached with them already. They are aware that that's one of the things that we are trying to do. And they initially were amendable to it, but the, our representative was gonna get back in touch with me. But we have broached that to them.
So we have a pretty decent relationship with them in general, because they're under a TIF agreement. And, um, so every year we speak to them, the assessors do, telling them, okay, this is what the assessment's gonna be. And we work through that to make sure that we reduce the amount of potential abatements from them. This is, I know, I've been in conversation with their attorney twice now already, because this is a year where they're going from a seventy-five percent exemption to a fifty percent exemption. So you're gonna see an uptick in new growth this year because of that. And the conversation is, we're gonna have that conversation. If they're producing the cardboard, they should be taking the cardboard back. It's that simple. I'm serious, it's their, it's their policies, it's their practices. You get a cardboard box that has one thing in it, and it's because of the way they, they package. And it's how, and it's how we buy. Right, it's how we buy, I understand that. But if they're going to do that, and if that's gonna cause costs for a municipality, it's only fair for the municipality to speak to them to try to get them to be partners. And so maybe it seems silly, but we're gonna try.
No, nothing silly, nothing ventured, nothing gained, right?
I mean, they have, they have a compactor right in the back of their building, so. Worst comes to worst, we, we, we get a happy medium, so.
We went, when that first opened, we had the opportunity to go look at it inside. And it was kinda like walking in the warehouse at the end of Indiana Jones, when you walk in there. But they, I remember them explaining to us, they have one area, which is their receiving area, where all the packages come in in cardboard, products come in cardboard, that they unpackage. And then they have one, which is their shipping area, where they re, where they're packaging it based on what you ordered. And then they have their shipping area, which quite honestly, it looks like North Station, where you've got trucks. And they don't package on shelves in the trucks, they package, they get stuff to fit in like a puzzle in the trucks, based on where it's going. So they're very efficient. And I don't see why their efficiency should lead to added costs for the city. If we can do it, we're willing to try.
That's, like I say, definitely worth a shot. So originally, um, in terms of, now, I know, I understand, it's not the pickup, it's the disposal, where you were saving money. And originally, we said, we would be saving about a hundred thousand dollars a year. But it sounds like we've doubled the number of properties, um, 'cause it, we were just around the three hundred mark on, on the businesses original.
Right.
So we've pretty much doubled that, so that number should be increased to about a two hundred thousand dollar savings.
We would think.
Okay.
So what we did not originally account for is additional disposal by some of the properties in the city. Residential properties and things like that. So, um, we're working through that right now to see what the number's gonna be. So we really don't have a number yet. 'Cause it really did not fully hit until May.
Right.
Okay? So we're waiting to see what the May, June, July numbers are like, and then we'll start to see a trend, and then we'll be able to start to look at it. My goal has been, in this process so far, is to not make any representations based on, based on a guess. We, and I'm driving these poor people nuts, because I'm trying to force them into data. We want statistics, we want data, we want stuff we can depend on. If we're gonna say something to the public or to you folks, we wanna be able to stand behind those numbers.
Yeah, and we want true numbers, you know, in the end result. In the end result, did we save two hundred thousand and also create two hundred thousand in, in revenue because of, on the school side?
Yeah.
Well...
I think you're gonna see a savings. And I think you're gonna, by the time we're done, I think you're gonna see enhanced, um, you're gonna see savings on the recycling side. You're gonna see more recycling, and you're gonna see a savings on the trash collection side. We need help getting the message out there to people on the trash collection. People, every so often, you'll see a dirty diaper in a recycling bin. Well, you can't, just because if something is a piece of plastic, does not make it recyclable. You can't recycle single-use bags.
Right.
Right? Because they get caught up in the machines. That's the only reason. You can't recycle plastic silverware. You know, forks, spoons, and knives. You can't recycle those, because they get caught up in the machine. Single stream is not the best way to go with recycling. It may be the cost-effective way to do it, but in my mind, it's penny-wise and pound-foolish, because you put a bottle, you're much better off taking a bottle to a recycling facility, uh, um, you know, centers. Redemption Center. Because you give it back to them, it goes back to them in a whole piece. You throw it in a single stream, it gets broken. If it's mixed in with cardboard, the shards get into the corrugated, that cardboard's not worth anything anymore. That glass isn't worth anything. You've basically made trash in, in a recycling bin. So that's the education we've gotta get to. We've gotta get to the point of people thinking twice before they throw stuff out. People will throw out old clothes that they, that are ripped, because they don't wanna give them to anybody. Well, there are companies that will take the ripped clothes. And what they'll do is, they'll either fix them, or they'll shred them. Okay? But anybody, there was a, there was a reuse market for every piece of textile. Even these mattresses with Hand Up. If they're really soiled mattresses, they won't resell them. But if they're not re-soiled mattresses, if they're clean, relatively clean, they'll clean them, and they'll resell them. And you'd be amazed at the amount of people that would buy a recycled mattress.
I would be.
I, I was amazed. I went in there once, my, uh, we were getting rid of some mattresses from our house in New Bedford. And we drove down there with them. If you deliver them, it's fifty dollars if they pick it up. If you deliver, it's twenty-five dollars, if you take it yourself. We took them in, paid twenty-five bucks, and that was it. They were gone. And these were clean mattresses, I'm sure they got resold.
Well, I think part of it, as I'm sitting here listening to you, is to somehow put together some type of pamphlet or something, listing the companies and what they handle.
They're working on that.
Um, yeah, I mean, 'cause a lot, some of what you're saying, I, firstly, I've never heard of it, and, uh...
They're gonna, we're gonna, they're gonna be working on stuff. Our goal is for right around September, October, to start putting out information. And it's gonna go out through the schools, and it's gonna go out additionally. But we're, we're working towards getting it out through the schools.
And I can't hope but think, over the years, 'cause we've been talking, this has been going, what, five years now? So, you're right, people have been listening, they listen at council meetings, they listen at committee meetings. So you're right, when the hammer finally came down, they weren't shocked. It was just a matter of how long it took to get there. So even, yeah, having the conversations, people, I'm sure that, you know, people are gonna say, "Wow, wow, I can do that? Oh, that's great, I'd rather do that," or whatever the case may be. Especially with the, with clothing and stuff.
Yeah. Clothing is a thing, old plates, old cups, glasses.
Blankets.
Blankets. There were, there's a company that we talked to today that will come pick it up from your doorstep. Just make an appointment to them. They'll pick it up, they'll reuse it. And so the idea is to try to get people to reuse as much, and that's not a bad idea for sustainability either. Try to get it so that they can use it. I mean, years ago, we did it all the time with Goodwill Industries, with Salvation Army. And then things kinda fell off a little bit. And, you know, so that's not, it's something that we've always done in the past, and it made sense. The explosion of municipal solid waste is such that the Commonwealth is not gonna be able to deal with it. The mayor and I were speaking to the lieutenant governor about it not too long ago. Massachusetts has a zero-waste policy. What that means is they're gonna put it all on a train and send it to Ohio. That's our zero-waste policy. Well, the day's gonna come where Ohio's gonna say, "No, thank you." We were sending, uh, soil up to Maine, Maine said, "No, thank you anymore." Uh, contaminated soils. You've gotta come up with a way to handle it. And we're trying, not that we're gonna solve the problems of the Commonwealth here, not that we're gonna probably be able to solve all of Far Rivers' problems here, but if we can make inroads in it, it's much better than it was.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Everything we're trying to do is, we're just trying to take it out of the waste. We're taking it out of the waste stream, add more recycling, the textile, take that out, that's, there's some, that just lowers our municipal waste, and it saves everyone. That's the goal, that's what we're trying to do. And Matt's doing a great job as leading, as leading us, and we're, we're making it happen.
I'm just kinda facilitating it, okay?
So my last question, 'cause I know other people have questions, is, what did you say about the private haulers?
Well, no, I said we've gotta start acting like private haulers.
Oh.
Being businesslike. A private hauler knows exactly what a haul is costing.
Right.
Okay? And we need to know that too. We need to make business, businesslike decisions on whether we're gonna go with this, or we're gonna go with that. Whether we're gonna implement this, or we're gonna implement that. It's not just a matter of, years ago, the seafood industry used to go out and catch as much as they can, they could, and then sell it. And then Stop and Shop started saying, "Hey, that's not such a great way to do it." Stop and Shop started contracting with seafood companies, with fishermen, saying, "In three weeks, I wanna sell pollock. In four weeks, I wanna sell cod. I'll buy this much of it from you." And they would start catching to demand, rather than catching to create supply. So you've gotta be, we have the, the business models, we have the ability. It's just a matter of changing how we think about things. And cities don't typically think this way.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Perera?
Some of the questions that I have, uh, one of the places, too, is my brother's keeper that comes and does, a lot of stuff to do with that. Uh, as far as the textile, there is a company, they spoke at one of the Veterans War Council meetings. And Father Rob's Church has one. They have a thing in the back.
Do you remember what company that was? Do you remember what company that was?
I have the name of it at home, and the woman's contact, because I had told him about it, and...
If you don't mind, if you could get that to Al.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to figure out, I mean, there's nothing wrong with having more than one.
And people can put them in different locations, and then you get so much every month for the tonnage that's there.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of what I heard you talk about, uh, was the education and different fines. The education, the state has an entire booklet.
We're working with them.
On exactly how you do the education piece.
Missy Hollenbeck was in about a month ago.
Yeah.
And she's the municipal coordinator of liaison.
For the educational program.
On, on recycling and all their education, she's out of Taun, she's located in Taunton, but she works for Mass DEP, and she's worked with Charlie and Al and their staffs at length, and we had a meeting with her about a month ago, I think, just to kind of re-establish the relationship, and we're gonna be working with her to get more information out. Years ago, when I was doing this in New Bedford, many years ago, we used to work with the schools using a book called The Lorax, from Dr. Seuss.
Right.
Which is about sustainability, and we would do it with the third and fourth grades, and have them read The Lorax, we'd give them The Lorax books, and send them home, and they then become the best enforcers of recycling.
So, another thing you talked about was, you know, the fine, we're gonna give them a letter, send a letter, do another letter, then they pay the fine, what have you. But we haven't talked about what we could do in a more positive way, because back when these bins first came in, under Bob Carrier's administration, all of the codes that were on the barrels, they were supposed to be lifted and weighed, there was a picture that was gonna be taken, and there would be, um, a system whereby, as you lifted the recycle bin, the weight went to that barcode, and then the owner would receive a coupon for, um, D'Angelo's to a movie theater. You would get a reward for all the recycling that you did, versus fining people.
So, I agree with you.
To do something more positive.
So, let me address that, because we did have this conversation.
Okay.
That was based on certain technology in the trucks, that quite honestly, doesn't exist. So, our way of looking at it is to do the contests and the rewards through the kids in the schools, where classes, one of the things we've talked with the school department is, classes are gonna have contests of recycling at home, and we'll figure out how this is gonna work, and the class that has the best recycling would get an ice cream social, or would get D'Angelo's, or would get something like that.
A trip to Disney?
Well, depends on if they really recycle.
That would be...
If they really recycle, but I mean, the idea is...
When I was in school, an ice cream was a good thing.
Yeah.
Today, I think they want a little bit more than an ice cream.
Well, I don't know about that, when the collector's office hits their collection numbers, we have an ice cream social, and they look forward to it.
My students love when the principal buys the pizza, so...
Okay, so maybe now it's pizza.
So, pizzas, but I agree with you. So, that whole, that whole concept of doing that is a great idea, the trouble is, that requires automated arms on the trucks, which we're not using, right?
No.
Okay, because that works well in the north end, and in the south end, in the subdivisions, but those arms don't work on Palmer Street, those trucks don't work in the, in the...
So, they can't use different trucks for different areas?
What happens is, with the contract, they assign to us a certain number of trucks, which by the way, we're working to make sure that they say City of Fall River on the side.
Well, they should've done that from the day.
Yes, but that's, that was a conversation we had last Wednesday.
But they're leasing some right now.
So, they're leasing the trucks, and on the bottom of it, it said, "Leased for the communities of Fall River, Swansea, and Somerset," and we told them that's not satisfactory. Okay? By right, they were, they're supposed to assign a certain number of trucks to us, we understand that trucks break down. So if they have to substitute out a truck for another community, they're supposed to contact them in the morning, and tell them where that truck is going, and what the substitute in is.
Or get a magnet that says City of Fall River.
Well, this is what, but still, even at that, we wanna know what the truck numbers are, because those truck numbers are then picked up when you dispose, and that's how the tipping slips are done. And what's happening now is we're getting Excel spreadsheets of tipping lists, and then we're doing...
Well, some of the, some of the bills that we got, were from other communities, where things happened.
You know something, we've looked at that, 'cause I've heard that issue, and they have done a substantial investigation into it, and so far, we haven't seen any other communities tipping slips. Now, I'm not saying that...
I know what you're not saying.
There's not other communities' waste in those trucks. As a matter of fact, there may be unique situations where that has happened, and we've identified it, and it might be, and I'm not saying we have, we might've actually spoken to the contractors about it. But we've heard that, and it's not going unnoticed, and it's not going unchecked.
Well, I'm glad that you're able to express that with this committee as well, uh, because we hear things from people, and, um, you know, to say, "Oh, no, that's not happening," and people say, "Well, look at this slip, and look at that," and I'm like, "Okay," so...
Without getting too much into it, Mr. Denmead himself was out there one morning at what time?
Four in the morning, 'cause he's an early riser.
Okay, they were out there, and they were actually climbing in trucks, 'cause under the contract, we have the ability to inspect the trucks out at their site before they start their runs. And one thing I would say, Counselor, on that point, 'cause I know this has been a hot topic with you, especially, we are enforcing the contract with EZ in a way it hasn't been enforced in years.
But I've gotta tell you, the EZ disposal men that come to my house, I have never had a problem. The barrels are put back, you know, they're not just thrown, um, but my neighbors all do the proper recycling and this that they have to do. But they have been phenomenal, very good.
EZ's been a good partner for the city.
They really have been, I, I don't have a complaint.
That doesn't mean that there's been parts of the contract we haven't enforced.
Well, there are some, like calling in, making sure you're staying later if you're gonna be here on a Saturday.
We wanna make sure that we're enforcing, and by the same token.
Yep.
I've kinda pushed the message with our side, that if we're gonna expect them to live by the contract, we have to live by the contract as well.
Well, I think that Carlos Cudo, the supervisor that they have here in the area, any problem anywhere in the city.
He's a good guy.
You tell Carlos, "It is handled, he takes care of everything."
No, no doubt about it.
But if you're looking at, you know, anything over seven, that they're gonna have to get their own haulers, I'll tell you a concern that I have, and you should make sure that that gets into part of the ordinance that you bring forward. People sometimes then get a dumpster versus another company that has a bin, they get a dumpster. But then, the dumpsters are placed, small parcels of property, they'll put a dumpster in between two houses, and I got several calls, one of them in particular was on Bedford Street, that the dumpster was in between two houses, and the lady that lived in one of the houses, wasn't her dumpster, she could not open her window because of the smell from the dumpster.
Really?
They have to be so far away from a neighbor, just like, you know, you build something, you have to have so many feet from front to, so many feet on the side, that needs to be put in there.
And actually, on that point, that's a good point, but that's more so than a trash number.
Right.
That's a building code, that's a zoning code, because some communities have a section on dumpsters that require dumpster mitigation by site, by fencing, and you can only put them in certain locations, um, because I have seen situations in other communities where it's been even worse than that, when you try to open your window.
Yeah. Well, I had checked.
Yeah.
Back then, maybe five, six years ago, I had checked, and there was nothing that they could do.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point, we'll keep that in mind.
Or, you know, maybe...
Wouldn't the Hamesha, um, didn't the, uh, doesn't the Board of Health also oversee the dumpsters?
Okay, that's an interesting point, if I can address that.
This whole thing with trash is really Board of Health?
We're working, well...
Yeah, but they monitor dumpsters.
It's two things, because in Fall River, it's by ordinance.
Right.
But that, there is a state law, the state sanitary code, that the Board of Health can enforce. So, the one thing that we're starting to look at is coordinating enforcement of the state law and the ordinance, and if we can do it by the same inspector, or the same person that's out there for code enforcement, not that I'm looking to double-fine people, but there are certain fines that are so egregious, or certain situations that are so egregious, you wanna make sure you're fining them correctly. And so the idea is, there is, you're right, in, in towns, solid waste is done by the Board of Health.
But it was done here, because the council never, ever voted on purple bags. That came in under Flanagan, and it was the Board of Health that implemented the bags. It wasn't a vote of the council.
Because trash, as I said in the beginning, is a public health issue.
And I think, I understand what you're saying, too, about, you know, food waste and things like that, maybe we oughta bring back the swill buckets, right?
Well...
Those were great! I think I have a flower pot growing in one. Well, not at my house, but...
But your point is well-taken, and that's something we'll keep in mind.
Yeah, just, there's no pig farmers around here that...
Pig farmers are a dying breed.
Hmm, yeah.
And they get all...
Because everybody that would kill a pig is a dying breed.
No, because the people who moved in next to them.
Oh.
They were moving to the nuisance, so to speak, but yet they had the nuisance removed.
Well, I haven't been at a kick-killing, kick, uh, pig killing for many years, um, my grandfather died, so I haven't seen a deer or a pig be killed in quite a while. Rabbits, my father still didn't go.
But a lot of people are using it, but composting is still an agricultural thing.
Right.
It gets disposed of food waste.
Right.
Gets disposed of agriculture, so, but those are important things, so we'll keep those in mind.
All right, just keep those in mind, and I know that they did have, um, you know, I know that they did have a whole big program in the state, and, and I, I've gotta admit, uh, Amazon, I ordered one thing of mascara, came in a box this big, like you could fit a pair of shoes in that.
It's, it's a conversation to have, it's, it's not gonna be an easy conversation, but it's worth a try.
And I hope that they do something about it. And I think the school department should pay for their...
They are.
And they could make money on cardboard, 'cause they get a lot of cardboard that comes in, so, with that, I yield.
Thank you. I have just a quick question. So, on the cardboard situation, what, what was the end result of the pilot program? Did that...
We're looking to expand it.
Okay.
We're looking to expand that program. Uh, this definitely, uh, was a positive move, uh, even the south end, we had some tics in it, uh, at the initial onset, they've, uh, compliance has picked up in that section. But, uh, we've already specked out, uh, two areas, one in each area, one in each zone, and, uh, you know, it's just the, uh, when are we gonna launch it, uh, are we gonna purchase new cots for it, are we gonna have enough in our inventory that we just took in to just replace the lids and put brown lids on? So that's, we're in that stage right now, but we're definitely looking to, um, to extend that.
It's become a hot topic, cardboard again.
Yeah.
It's become valuable now.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It's kind of a, it's a discussion I have with my own, uh, at the school, 'cause they do single-stream recycling, we have a dumpster for that, and I made the argument that we're throwing cardboard or everything else that we recycle through all the classrooms, you know, and we're, and I, I literally used your line, "It's contaminated, what are you doing with it now?" They're throwing it away.
Consolidated.
And I'm, and I'm paying for it now, too.
Consolidated.
Where, two years ago, we were, we weren't paying for recycling through the company, they were taking it, we had four bins, they would take it off our hands for nothing, now we're paying to recycle it.
And that was before China Shield.
Yeah.
China sold.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that seems to be the issue. Uh, the other question I had was regarding yard waste. I know we talk a lot about recycling trash, but as far as yard waste is concerned, what is, do we have a cost on that, to get rid of, when we collect grass clippings and all that?
I don't have one available, but we can get you one.
We can get you one, uh, just give us a little bit, you know?
'Cause it seems like we always talk about trash recycling, we don't talk about, even though it's only relevant, let's say, eight months of the year, 'cause nobody cuts grass in the winter, but what does that look like, and, and has that impacted our overall costs at all?
Well, it, it definitely, uh, has an impact on our costs, um, but, it is, it's, Counselor, it's not just the, the grass, it, the, we have a large impact when it comes down to fall and early spring.
Yeah.
With the leaves, the leaves is the highest, uh, uh, cost, because it comes in tonnage, tons, and, uh, when they become wet.
And municipal leaf collection is not necessarily clean. You get styrofoam cups in it, you have all sorts of things in it, this is not a high-value, they have to comb through it.
And we can't burn it.
No, which is too bad.
Yeah.
Unless you put a hot dog on top, that you're cooking some.
And that's because of the regulations in the state.
More burning, more burning.
Yeah.
There's, I, I know that they're well-meaning, but there's things that the state, DEP is helping in certain areas, but there's a lot of ways they could provide further help and assistance, and it's just too daunting, I think, for them to try.
And where does, where does the yard waste go?
Right now, we take it to, uh, LAL, it's up, up in Tiverton, and, um, we've been dumping over there, uh, we've been using that site for quite some time. We have a, uh, perspective site that, uh, we're going to engage conversation with, and it's located in, uh, Freetown, so we, uh, we're gonna engage conversation with this, this vendor.
Okay. Counselor Dean?
At one time, we were dealing with two entities, weren't we? Something Wolf or something?
We have, we, we, we were, um, but, uh, there were some issues with compliance with that, with that source, so, uh, but we do bring them some organics that we, uh, that we collect from the schools.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, because he does have a pig farm, he has pigs on his farm, and, um, we, Christmas trees.
Right.
Takes in the Christmas trees, you know?
And again, I'm going from memory, so I could be wrong, I could be completely wrong on my numbers, but somehow, in the back of my mind, I remember a couple of years back, um, that it was costing us seven hundred dollars a truckload, and I think in the budget, it was like two hundred and ten thousand for the year.
Might've been, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I will tell you...
But again, were the trucks full?
Right.
'Cause I said, that had nothing to do with weight, it was strictly, if a half a truck of yard waste went, you paid the seven hundred, if a full truck...
Yeah, I mean, I've told you pretty much our successes, but I will tell you one failure, uh, that just came to mind, has to do with the schools. Um, the schools are not using plastic trays anymore, they're using disposable trays, right? Are the schools using those?
Styrofoam trays.
Styrofoam trays.
They are.
And we tried talking to them, uh, it's not, and we tried talking to them, because when he was in New Bedford, Mr. Olivera did a project where they started, where they put dishwashers back into...
Revived all the dishwashers at the school.
And we, it was reusable trays, and it cut down on the waste coming out of the schools. We tried to do that with the schools, and we got a lot of pushback on that, so we, we did not, we were not successful on that, but we tried.
Yeah.
Uh, to me, the state was paying for it, there was a grant program, it was a gimme, but they did not wanna do it, so...
And they have dishwashers in it.
Right, I think only, I think there's only four of the schools that have cafeterias now. Cooking cafeterias.
And, 'cause of the nature of how the, like, for us, we get food delivered from the public schools, and it, it gets delivered there, the trays come in, it's served, it goes in the garbage and continue.
But, think about it, if they came in on plastic trays and you had a dishwasher there, that you would load, put the soap in, turn it on, and just let it run.
Correct.
It's cutting down on the solid waste that's coming out of it. We tried to push this.
Probably using more water to wash those.
Well, that wouldn't be such a bad thing for Mr. Furland, and that's your next meeting.
And he'd be dancing.
That's your next meeting. That's your next meeting, but, um, I think it's a lot easier to deal with the water than it is with the solid waste.
Fair enough.
That's right, and if you use more water, it costs less.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Counselor Deon, anything else?
I yield, sorry.
Vice President.
I just have one question. Uh, Charlie, you talked about maybe getting another bin?
A bin for, oh, for the, uh, corrugated. Well, yeah, we, we're looking to expand the, uh, the, the program now.
I can't have four or five bins.
Well, you won't have four or five bins, you, you'll have one additional bin for corrugated. So when you get your Amazon deliveries, for the little item you purchased within the big box, you'll have a special container to put it in.
But, you know, it's funny, when you said about, uh, the, the lids, because Council of Rico, when Danny Rico was on the council. Danny's idea was get all the same color bins and just buy lids for different, you know, for yard waste or for recycling or for garbage.
Makes sense.
You wanted to listen to him, but it made sense.
It makes sense because of stock, you just keep your stock levels.
Bins do you have left anywhere?
I'd have to take a look in the back.
Oh, no.
Well, we have some that came back in that are damaged.
Chassis were cracked.
So, we did a lot of cop maintenance on the street.
Right.
Um, that was about a two-month effort, right?
They could fix, at the site, they would fix it.
Whatever they couldn't.
But there were some that were just beyond, and so there are some, there's a pile, there's a, a stockpile in, on Lewiston Street that is.
They were just discarding those, now we're getting cred from the company and purchasing some more.
You don't credit them?
So, as I stated, first off, thank you for inviting us back, and thank you for your import, your questions. I was gonna suggest, if you want us to come back in October, that might not be such a bad time.
Well, because we've been, what, five years talking about this?
But arguably, we're seeing progress now.
I know, about getting the data and.
But we're seeing progress now, counselor. Progress that we haven't seen, and not because of lack of effort in the past, but there is a, there is a commitment in Mayor Coogan's administration to handle this in a much more cost-effective fashion that protects the public health.
I'm glad to hear that. I yield.
You yield. Yeah, so, um, it is my intention, this committee will revisit this in October, with your updates of what you've already specified, as well as if you could add information about the yard waste.
Sure.
Situation, that would be fabulous. So I entertain a motion to table this?
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Gentlemen, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Is this thing here?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll send it tomorrow.
With that, we'll move on to item number four, it's a resolution, the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convened quarterly to review and discuss the water supply and water filtration plant, last tabled January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, I entertain a motion to lift from the table.
Motion to lift from the table.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can invite our guests to come down? That's fine. Gentlemen, good evening, if you could, um, identify yourselves, please, that'd be fabulous.
Paul Furland, the Administrator, Community Utilities, City of Fall Ripa.
Brian Jacob, Director of Water Department Maintenance.
David Peeler, Director of Treatment and Resources.
Gentlemen, welcome. Mr. Furland, I'll let you run and go with it.
Excellent, so thank you very much for having us down here for our quarterly, uh, reports. Today, I figured that I would bring, uh, two division leaders, uh, Brian Jacob and, uh, Dave Peeler of Distribution and Treatment. Let them talk a little bit about their divisions, what they do, what they've done maybe in the past six months, uh, and a little bit, uh, about, uh, what I talk to them on a daily basis. I love coming down here, talking to the counselors, providing you information, but I figured this was an opportunity, get a little bit different, uh, uh, look into, uh, into our division. So, I'll turn it over to Brian, and he can start off.
Good evening, counselors. Um, I'll start off by saying, uh, I wanna praise the men and women we have working in our division. Uh, they're great, they're awesome. Uh, we only have thirteen employees right now, and that's including myself, project specialist, engineer. The rest is all road people, so you're looking at ten road peo- uh, uh, and a mechanic, so you're talking about nine road people. What we've accomplished so far this year since January, uh, we've accomplished quite a bit, as you guys will notice. We've had ninety reported leak inspections, which is, we get calls for to go out to check for leaks. Forty-five were leaks, twenty we repaired, twenty-five we actually had to replace from the curb stop to the water main. Now you're talking from one-inch services all the way up to two-inch services. Main breaks, we had, we've had thirteen main breaks from six-inch, eight-inch, up to ten-inch so far this year. Bowen Street, uh, we were getting a lot of calls of, uh, complaining of dirty water, and the main was actually dead-ended on that section. So what we decided to do, we ran a new two-inch line, we connected it to both mains of two hundred and sixty feet length of, uh, two-inch pipe, and we connected new services to the homeowners that were on that. And now it's not dead-ended, so there's no, the water is just completely. Uh, we've done twenty spots that needed lumen seed, 'cause whenever, anytime we do sidewalks, it's grass, especially throughout the wintertime, we don't lumen seed at that time, so we wait till the springtime, we've been out, we've done twenty spots of that. Hydrants repaired, so we have a program that if the fire department goes out, they check hydrants. Uh, it comes back to me if they write anything down saying something's wrong with it, where it could go from hot to turn, uh, won't shut off, needs to be greased, check main valve. All different kinds, check, uh, replace side steamer, replace breakaway, operating night, not operating properly. So, we've repaired eighty-five hydrants so far this year.
Is it flush?
Yes, that's what they go up and do, check, yes. Um, also, we've, we, which I'm sure you guys have noticed, parts of the city where painting hydrants. Uh, so before we paint, it's not just, we don't just go out and paint, we go out, we service them first, we scab them, meaning, you know, take all the old paint out, put primer, and buy, and then put paint. We've done a hundred and seven hydrants so far this year of doing all that. So far, we have, so every trench we do, whether it's a leak or whatever it is, we are, we, we do our own asphalt, we do our own concrete. So we've done, so far this year, we've done forty-eight spots that we've had go back, scab it, binder, top it off. Uh, concrete, we've done nineteen spots that we've had to. Water inspections, which is any contractors that do work, we always like to be there to inspect, make sure everything's being done properly. Whether, whether, no matter if they're doing something in the city or on a, on a property side, so far this year, we've done seventy-four of those. Uh, mark-offs, mark-off tickets is, so if you guys, if you're a contractor and you're gonna dig something, you have to call in Dick Safe, we're not part of Dick Safe. So then they'll call the contractor to call us for us to go mark the water for them, so they know where it is, so they don't hit it. So far this year, we've had two hundred and sixty-five mark-offs, and some of those are whole streets. So whenever you see Ferreira doing whole streets, we've been there marking off the water to make sure nothing gets in. Curb stop issues from high, low, cover missing, uh, we were, so far this year, we've had twelve. Service turn-on, turnoffs, people need service to be turned on or off for whatever purpose they may need, so far this year, we've had twenty-five of those. Buffalo boxes, uh, which is a curb stop box that goes down to the curb stop, to shut, to be able to shut the water off for the homeowner. So far this year, we've been about fifteen this year. So, as you guys can tell, for the amount of staff we have, we have done quite a bit. So that's why I'm saying, I'm, I have to praise the women, men and women that we have on our staff. Now, mind you, doing all this stuff, it's tough to do sometimes when you have a backhoe that's from nineteen ninety-eight. It's very old. To do our daily work, it's not easy. We are in need of a, a new backhoe, definitely in need of an, another new dump truck. Uh, we need some, some pickup trucks, and we definitely would need a, a new roller for when we do our asphalt patches. 'Cause our roller is extremely, extremely old also. We have our cold storage garage, which is the old garage that's there, uh, that's in rough shape. That needs a new roof, that needs a new siding, that needs, that needs to be all fixed up. Because we're gonna, we use that, we have a lot of stuff in there that can be in the cold, it's gonna be cold storage, but it needs to be like it's in rough, real, real, real rough shape. We also do, is we do, uh, weekly inspections, so I have them do, once a week, I have them inspect all our trucks. So one guy may have assigned two trucks or three trucks to them, they go, and they go through the whole truck, if anything's wrong, it goes automatically sends a signal to the mechanic, mechanic takes care of the problem. Like I said, we do it on a weekly basis, because you just never know. Uh, and everything's documented, we have a utility cloud program, which is great. It, that's how I was able to get all these numbers, I mean, it, thing's amazing, keeps track of what's been done to the vehicles, what, you know, this way we can track, okay, we've changed this too many times, or, you know, so we can track it. Also, every Wednesday, I have a, uh, toolbox safety talk with my, with my people. We, uh, change it up every week, I see, like, it's been very hot, you, you know what I mean, just, just to touch base with them, hey, just be careful. But every week I change it up, depending what it is, I, when I see what we're gonna possibly gonna do, I change it up. Besides that, we also assist wastewater when needed, uh, which we have. Recently, uh, cemetery, we've been assisting them, they've been needing people, they've been struggling, so they've been asking us for help. We've been having guys every single day going out, right now they're good, but we were sending people there after to go help them out. Uh, weed whacking, cutting grass at the cemeteries, whatever they needed. Uh, DCM, obviously, we assist with salting and plowing also. We help them when it comes time, and other things when needed also. But, that's pretty much, as you have heard, I mean, it's, for the amount of staff we have, we've get a lot done with what we have. We have a great group of people, I mean, everybody gets along with each other, so.
So, just to touch on a couple of things that Brian said, you know, again, the staff that we have, um, both in maintenance and distribution are unbelievable, uh, all the guys, and, uh, men and women that we have working down there. Again, I had Brian, um, kinda mention a couple of the things that, uh, they're in need of, um, those may, I may be back here asking for, uh, transfers from free cash, once it gets certified in this, the, the December timeframe.
That's not a surprise, you're always here asking for money.
Again, I wanted you to hear it from somebody else, that it's not me asking for these things, this comes from our staff, this comes from our employees, and that's why, um, you know, I wanted them to talk about some of the things that I talk with them on a daily basis, and then have to bring up, so. Again, thank you very much, Brian.
Mr. Furland, if I could ask, have you presented these capital needs to the area?
Uh, no, these parti- particular needs I have not brought to the, uh, administration, again, these are things that, uh, I'm looking at, uh, potentially what happens with the certified free cash. Again, some of the other needs that will, uh, that Dable mentioned as well, uh, may need, uh, either bond authorizations or other things that I'd be back to the council for.
Okay.
And now, I will turn it over to Dave Peeler, Director of, uh, the Water Treatment Division as well.
Thank you, counselors, um, glad you got me down here today to kinda let you, let you know some things we do over at the treatment plant. Um, we recently had, um, a tour of the new maintenance building, the tower, the old treatment plant and new treatment plant. Unfortunately, we didn't get to see any of you there, hopefully you'll be able to be there for the next one.
Well, we only found out three days before they were having it.
Okay.
We didn't see a lot of people from further than there either.
Uh, there was quite a few people there.
A lot of people told me they wanted to go, but they didn't know about it.
Hopefully we'll be having some more.
Hopefully you have another one.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it was a great success. You know, I'd been told that we had anywhere from six to eight hundred people that showed up, um, it was, it was a great event, um, I would love to do more. And anytime, any counselors would love to come down to the treatment plant, I would be more than willing to give you a tour. Yeah, I know you have. So getting to staffing, um, I know you've had Mr. Furland come down here in the past before, saying that we were, you know, desperate for employees and, um, glad to say that a lot of that has changed. Up until the week or so ago, I was fully staffed, uh, with competent professional men and women, um, to do an excellent job every day. A lot of that had to do with increasing some of the salaries, uh, we were able to, to hire and retain the staff, which is very important, it was tough for us to do that for a while. As you know, uh, we'd hire people and they'd go to different communities and make more money, uh, but we have a excellent staff right now that, you know. Again, I, I'm, I have one position open at the treatment plant, uh, and that's only due to an internal move, uh, that recently took place. So, um, things are going very, very well as far as staffing, uh, goes, and again, I, I, I give credit to them, they make my job easier every day. So, just to give you a basic, you know, we're a twelve million gallon a day plant, give or take, on average. We've done a lot of repairs in the last six months. So at the beginning of the year, we did a, a filter rehab, we had done one about three years ago, we do it all in-house, we use some Diamond Co-op students as well, uh, to help us. Which is a huge, huge savings to the taxpayer by doing everything in-house. Again, you know, I have a, a staff that is well capable of doing much of the work that needs to be done. Certain things we need to send out, obviously, to vendors to get the work done for, you know, rebuilding motors and stuff, but for the most part, my maintenance staff is, you know, top-notch, and we get everything done internally. You know, we've had the building repainted, done a lot of landscaping outside. I'm not sure about you two counselors, but I know Linda's been in there before, and I don't know the last time you were in there, but it looks completely different.
I've done the full tour.
Okay.
And I, and I can almost hit you with a rock from where I live.
Okay. The plant's gone through a lot of, a lot of changes, I mean, from painting and waxing the floors, it makes a nineteen seventy-six.
Kempton Street is on, uh, what would you call it, the northwest corner of the property.
He's at the water plant.
Oh, he's up the other one.
Yeah.
But I have had a full tour of that one once, too.
Um, I have a question.
Sure, Counselor Deon.
You know, if you go into the filtration plant, there's, you walk in and there's the bins that clean all the water, are all of those operational, or are they still run out?
Yes.
They're all operational?
Yes.
Have we had any problems, 'cause deers are gonna be coming in September, October, whatever, um, you get deers, how, how are we doing with losing deers there, they falling to the?
To be honest with you, I have not seen any at all this year.
Oh, good.
So we had, we had, uh, last year, we had put some, um, you should call them ramps inside the interceptor drain.
Right.
I don't know if they're working, but it seems like it, they might be helping, 'cause I haven't seen any deer in the interceptor drain.
You seen a lot of coyote up there?
I have not.
Man, they're coming by my house.
Really?
Yeah, who you cooking? I don't know, man, I'll say, I have pictures, like, it's like two o'clock.
I mean, in past, in past years, I, I mean, I've helped myself take deer out of the interceptor drain.
Right, right.
We, I, I haven't seen any in about a year.
Good, and I think that you are able to get more workers there now, because the union kinda separated you, did they do a separate agreement? Because you were all clumped in with everybody else.
Yeah, for treat, for treatment operators, there was an increase in pay.
But they were clumped in with clerks and, you know, your union, and most of your individuals, especially you, need certain certifications and certificates, so it really wasn't fair.
Yep.
So I'm glad that they did change that.
Yes, and it, like I said, retaining the staff is, you know, I mean, you keep having to rehire people and retrain people, and it's, it, it turns out to be a lot to, to keep the same people and, and they're qualified, good employees.
And even like with the bulldozer need, you know, with the different departments that have bulldozers, you went to the cemetery to help them out, some of your guys. But if you have a special job that you need a bulldozer, and they're not having a funeral that day, could you borrow from them to use it for the day? Do they work with, like that, right?
Yes, we actually work a lot also with DCM, DCM has been borrowing our trucks recently, 'cause they've been downing trucks, and they always call me. Darren especially calls me, asks, say, uh, I'm down a truck, you, you have a dump truck that we can use, I'll ask him, what are you looking to do? And then he'll tell me whether it's asphalt.
It's almost like a chip program where.
We always try to help each other out, always, always.
That's good to know, I think that that's, that's good, we all live in the same city, working for the same thing.
Yeah.
So.
Absolutely.
I'm just upset that they knocked down the other building, because we are paying for storage all over the place, and we could have rehabbed that cheaper than renting all over the place. And when somebody called me about the building, I'm supposed to have asbestos, and you're supposed to do water and spray, and I said, I have no idea what you're talking about, and I called the mayor, said, could you check on this, blah, blah, blah? And then I called back, I said, talk to the mayor, he's gonna check when they're gonna demolish it. They said, no, it's already been demolished, I called the mayor back, I said, it's been demolished, when? They demolished it yesterday. And I, I really, I really was upset about that, Paul, because that could have been a building we could have used for storage, we need storage somewhere.
Yeah.
I know it needed work.
Yeah, and, and.
When we did our original evaluations of, of the whole property, that building to rehab it and to reuse it was, was definitely.
We're not gonna reuse it to that purpose, though.
Right.
It was just to store things.
Yeah.
Because the one that Brian's talking about, the little building on the side, that's small, yeah, it needs a roof and it needs some paint, it needs some shingles, whatever, but you need a place to store things.
Yeah.
As well.
And that's, yeah, across next to the eighteen seventy-five tower, that's why we left the six-bay garage there, that's the one that needs the roof and, and windows and stuff like that.
I mean, that's a great project for the kids at Diamond, too.
They're looking at the ex, so the roof, they, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do because of potential contaminants in the roof, so they've already looked at that, but the exterior windows, fascia, so it will be done. That's the point, yes.
They're right there, then maybe they could run through the property when they're excited, could really stop that. Then maybe they could run through the property when they exercise, cause we would stop that. And if you want a bump, a dump truck or a bulldozer, whatever you need, I would suggest that the water department clean to the left, talk to the sheriff, have some inmates come, get rid of that cobblestone. You got a million cobblestones there for a buck a piece, you'll have a million dollars to buy your bulldozer. I've been dying to get rid of those. Who wanted to buy those was Terry Lubbridge.
There was.
Who then, he said, I'll die before they sell them to me. He's right, passed away two years ago.
There was.
And then they buried them.
Yeah, there was multiple talks on that. Again, when we did Bedford Street, we were supposed to remove them, but the water department in part of that contract, it was said that the water department was gonna get a benefit from city cobblestones and that DCM should get the benefit. That's why those were taken out of the contract when they were. Again, uh, I feel.
So, we have money buried underground. Even people from the city, if you wanted to do something in your yard, come up, take so many, we have to see where you put it on your property, even to give it to people to beautify the city or sell it. I'll work on that.
Again.
I'll figure out how to dig those out of there, yeah.
I'm sure you will.
But I think, thank you guys, cause I know you work hard and I see the guys go back and forth, and when I see them on the road, especially now when it's really hot, I'll always see if they wanna bottle of water or soda or something, grab it for me, like I do with my mailman. Um, although I've been freezing my mailman's water, so I give him a couple, and he's got a couple to go, cause it's, it's hot tonight.
I hope you give him city water.
I do.
That's good.
I do. Because the more I use, the less I'm gonna pay. But, thank you very much for the work you do. It, it does not go unnoticed for all of you.
Thank you.
It really doesn't.
I appreciate that.
I yield.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, yeah, just a few more things, um, just a couple of, uh, I, I kinda explained to you a little bit of the things that we've been doing, um, at the treatment plant. Again, we did, we rehabbed one of the filters at the beginning of the year, probably the filter that you saw down. Um, all four filters are back online, two more are in need of repair, which we will be doing another one this year, hopefully one next year, um, at, at a significant cost to the city by doing it all internally in-house, uh, possibly using co-op students. Uh, we've redone most of the lighting around the plant, uh, with LEDs, uh, to save on electricity. Uh, we do have a solar field in the back, which helps. Um, we are in need of a roof for the plant, um, dire need for a roof at the plant. Uh, so, part, partial, partial part of the roof was done in two thousand and eight, I believe, uh, and the rest of the roof is, you know, nineteen seventy-six. So, this, it's in need of re, it's in, it's in need of repair.
It's all wiped, it's, uh.
It, it ha, it has, and you know, if we ever wanna, if we ever wanna consider doing any kind of solar projects or anything like that on top of the roof, we need to have a good roof first. Uh, so, you know, those are some things that I'd, I'd like to get done. Um, you know, we, we have a, currently, right now, we have, uh, one of our motors is down for the, uh, finished water pumps that need to be rebuilt, that's a significant cost. Um, another project that I would, you know, really love to get done, we haven't been able to add fluoride into the water for a long time. Uh, a fluoride feed system is not adequate for the fluoride that we can get, uh, from our vendors. Basically, the fluoride that we were getting years ago was kinda like a sugar consistency. Uh, now it's more like a flour, and it just cakes up our machines, and our system's not adequate, so we do need to upgrade that system.
There's a lot of controversy about putting fluoride in or out of water.
Yeah, there is, uh, there, that's always a question, and that, and that's a decision made by the Board of Health on, uh, whether to, in the council, essentially, the Board of Health would make a recommendation.
They did, when you couldn't get the fluoride, all the dentists, I think you sent a letter out, Paul, to all, uh, Mr. Ferland notified all the dentists, so when people went in, and I get toothpaste with fluoride in it, so, you know, that helps.
Yeah, and it's a significant cost every year.
Yeah.
Fluoride's tough to get to begin with, um, a good product, and, uh, the equipment to run it's not cheap either, so, that's something that we need to upgrade. If, if we're gonna be mandated to, to put it in the water, then we need to upgrade the system to it.
Yeah, Mr. Ferland, just two questions. So back to Mr. Jacob's point about staffing, do, how many open positions do you have in that division?
Uh, so right now, we have six open positions within his division.
And any luck in filling those positions currently, or?
Uh, so we do have one, uh, one candidate, I just received a resume of yesterday, seems like a qualified candidate. Uh, one tough thing about the water field, and I've been down here talking about it before, it's, it's a ni, it's a niche field, um, you know, so, a lot of times, we have to bring somebody in unskilled and work with them, you know, uh, our guys are great at training, uh, younger people that wanna learn about in the field and stuff like that, uh, so, uh, that's definitely, uh, definitely one thing. The internal transfer that was talked about before from treatment, uh, it's, uh, that's something that's a temporary transfer right now for a, uh, for a backflow inspector's position that just recently opened up due to tragedy from, of one of our employees passing away.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, you know, again, we're always looking, uh, for, for good people. A lot of the staff that we have now has been with us for, uh, a period of time, and a couple of them have left and, uh, come back, you know, uh, I think, uh, the good quality staffing that we have, uh, comes from the good quality management that, uh, that is under me overseeing that staffing too, so.
Excellent. Your last question is lead service removal. Do you have an update on where, where that stands?
Yes, so thank you very much for asking, God, I wanted to bring it up.
You're welcome.
Uh, so, as of, uh, as of the, uh, past quarter, so the end of, uh, end of June, uh, we've done, uh, over fifty-four hundred in ser, in-house inspections for lead services, um, so we probably have, so that would be homes that were either identified, uh, through our records research to have a lead service, uh, or homes where we could not identify by our records what the, uh, service material was. So, uh, we've done so far fifty-four hundred in-home inspections, uh, and we've done a total of seven hundred, as of June thirtieth, it was seven hundred and six lead service replacements, uh, within homes. Uh, we do have a number, there's probably, um, about six, seven thousand, uh, verifications in-home inspections that we wanna still do, um, so that we can have a full leads, a, a full service material inventory, so that includes whether it's lead, copper, or plastic. We need to verify what the material is inside the house. So we have crews of contractors, our staff, um, engineers that are working for us right now going out, we're doing it multiple different ways. Uh, contractors, they're given a neighborhood and they're going door to door, knocking on the doors, uh, asking whether they can come in to inspect the service material, um, or leaving, uh, a notification for the customer to call to schedule an appointment. Uh, our staff in the water admin office is calling, uh, after hours typically, we're doing it from four to seven at night, to try to call homeowners to be able to schedule an appointment to go into, uh, those homes. We're making those appointments available, uh, any day of the week during the week, at night, or on Saturdays. Uh, we have been sending our staff along with, um, one of our, uh, engineers working on the project out on Saturdays, again, to, uh, to flood streets, uh, where we know that we need to get into homes to, uh, identify those services. Uh, so there still are a number of services out there. Uh, by the end of the calendar year, our goal, um, our target by the ACO is, uh, one thousand lead surfaces total, so we have just under three hundred left to go this year. Uh, my concern right now is locating those three hundred lead services, being able to get into the houses, do the inspections, so that we can find the lead services, and then the contractor can schedule the replacement. We have the funds in place, we have the contractor in place, we need, we need the lead service. So, right now, if somebody doesn't know whether they have a lead service or not, give our office a call, the Water Department Administration Office, uh, five oh eight, three two four, two three, three zero. Uh, just give us a call, we can look up to see whether we know your service material. If we don't, they'll be able to schedule you an appointment right then and there for whatever is convenient for you. Big thing, again, we ask all the customers, if somebody comes up to the house and asks to go into, to inspect your lead service, they will have a city of Fall River ID, even if it's a contractor, they typically have a marked vehicle, the contractor that's doing it now is Bisco Contracting Corp., they're in a contract for these inspections, uh, so they're going out into the neighborhoods, knocking on doors, they'll have a vehicle with them, they'll have, uh, you know, ID'd clothing and stuff like that, and a, uh, an ID with them that's, uh, in cooperation with the city of Fall River. So, um, you know, they'll go in, it's about a five-minute visit into the house, go down to the basement, look where the water meter is, and be able to identify whether it's lead, whether it's some other material, or whether we need to potentially dig a test pit out on the sidewalk to verify what the material is. Uh, customers can also do their own, own inspections in-home. Mass DEP website, uh, has a step-by-step process to be able to go through. They fill out a form right on Mass DEP's website, we get sent that information along with photos, so that we can update their records. So, multiple different ways, biggest thing, homeowners, if you own multiple properties within the city, give us a call, up, tell you, I got ten properties, I have five properties, I want you to come and, you know, check them all, inspect them all, you know, we're replacing the lead services at no cost to the homeowner, um, so that's a ten to thirteen thousand dollar cost that the homeowner does not have to pay for. Uh, so, sorry, a little bit long on the lead services, but trying to get all the information out.
Council, do you have?
So let's assume somebody doesn't have lead service inside the house, why would they still do ground testing outside the house?
So the problem is, sometimes when you have your service come in, the service will come in underneath the foundation and then come up. So if we go into the house and do an inspection and there's a dirt hole there and they see this much of new fresh copper coming up, but it's labeled in our records as a, as a lead service, um, we know that the piece coming out of the ground, this much, is copper, but our records indicate that the rest of it's lead. So that may be a reason to make us suspicious that they took, they, copper, there was an issue at some time, they tied the copper or brass or something onto, uh, the lead pipe underground and just ran it up to tie it into the meter. Through the Revised Lead and Copper Rule Improved, which is the new, there's the Revised Lead and Copper Rule that was, that came out about two years ago, goes into effect in October, then the Biden Administration put out the Revised Lead and Copper Rule Improved version, which goes even further, that actually has a requirement for two-point verification, uh, so for ver, and going into the house, looking at the water meter in the basements, one point, the other point would be, uh, a test pit. Other communities, I remember when I talked with, um, Denver, Colorado, they were actually doing what they call potholing, so they were digging four spots. So they were digging at the main, they were digging at the curb stop, in between there, and in between the curb stop and the house, they were digging four spots for their verification program. So, again, you know, we wanna be able to make sure that we do not miss any lead services, we wanna make sure that people are protected and that, you know, nobody can come back later and say, well, you guys, you know, you guys just assumed that this one was, we wanna be able to say, nope, we went after everyone that we could and made sure that there was no more lead services.
Okay, that I yield.
Council vice president.
I just have one question, Mr. Ferland. We just did our budget for June, um, and we had talked about different things that were needed, people brought up capital improvements, et cetera. We just raised water and sewer on the homeowners of, of the city. What money do you have to assist with, you know, doing some of this improvement? Maybe not everything, but maybe to get a backhoe, or maybe to get a dump truck? Do you have any money, or were you told, hold off and see what we get in free cash?
No, so that was a decision that I made to, uh, so, again, when we come to the end of the fiscal year, um, you know, when I was looking at my revenues compared to, to my expenses, um, I probably could have put in to purchase these under the last fiscal year, uh, gotten quotes and purchased them under the last fiscal year, taking delivery in this fiscal year. Uh, I opted not to do that, I opted to take, um, leave that money available, let it come out in free cash, cause that's, if you remember back, um.
Right, if you leave it in free cash, well, you're.
Right, if you remember back when we talked about, um, water and sewer rates, and we had Raph Telus here, one of the things that they talked about was being able to have a free cash, uh, balance available, which we did it this year.
Right.
And being able to use those for some of those capital expenditures, rather than, um, running it. Um, with the, with my FY twenty-five budgets, uh, we did increase the capital expense line items within water and sewer. Uh, they did go from, uh, eighty in sewer, one hundred in water.
Right.
Up to two hundred and fifty in each. So, um, could I tomorrow go out and purchase a backhoe, which runs at now probably about a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Yes, I could for my capital line item, uh, but I feel that the best fiscal measures would be wait, see what comes out in free cash and then make, uh, ask, request the council to make those, uh, purchases.
But now we know you have money there.
You know, again, and that's, that's some.
I mean, I, I agree. If it's needed, it's needed, and you use it frequently, so.
Yeah, you know, it's nineteen ninety-eight, the, the old one that we have, I think we have a two thousand, yeah. Yeah, there might be a fifteen or a sixteen and, and, and an eighteen, but again, we wanna keep those rotating, you know, one that's, uh, almost twenty-five, twenty-six years old.
I just wondered, right? That didn't come up, but, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Anything else, councilors?
Nope.
All right.
Motion to.
I'm going to, we're gonna quarterly, continue this quarterly update theme, so we're gonna, I'm gonna request a motion to table. Made?
Made, second.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. It's made its second, all in favor?
Aye.
Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs is now adjourned.